To order, our presentation of colors is done by the Reynolds High School ROTC. These are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel David Wise, U.S. Army retired, and Sergeant First Class Jamie Brown, U.S. Army retired. Would you please rise for the presentation of colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sub move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Our superintendent will now give his comments.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, teammates, parents, and members of the community. This month is School Board Appreciation Month. This evening, I'd like to pause and thank each of our school board members for your hard work and advocacy on behalf of our students, staff, families, and community. Thank you for stepping forward and offering yourself in service to our school system. On behalf of the Buncombe County Schools team, we sincerely thank you. This evening during the curriculum feature, we will hear about the amazing opportunities our students experience in CTE, or Career and Technical Education Program. CTE is an important part of curricular and extracurricular offerings in our school system. Our goal is that each and every student in our school system graduate on time, prepared for success on the pathway they choose beyond high school. I'm extremely proud of our CTE program. I'd like to this evening especially thank Mr. Clark Wyatt, who's just outside the door in the Maintenance Department team, Mrs. Lisa Payne in the Child Nutrition Department team, our school custodians and school leaders, who are absolutely amazing in their collective response to the water crisis earlier this month. The Child Nutrition Department offered lunch at convenience sites on the day we were out of school, and when we returned, were able to serve lunches in all schools, following all required protocols until full water service was reinstated. Once we returned to school, the 12 schools that were still at that time under a boil water advisory received a combined 16,000 bottles of water a day and over 1,000 bottles of hand sanitizer delivered by the school system. Additionally, all schools that either lost water at some point or who were under a boil water advisory were completely flushed from hot water heaters to ice machines to water fountains, et cetera. I'd like to commend our team for their leadership in a unique set of circumstances. Earlier this week, we recognized National Law Enforcement Day. I'd also like to take a moment to share my appreciation for our school resource officers, for Sheriff Miller, who's here with us this evening. Welcome, Sheriff. The Sheriff's Department and for all of our law enforcement partners, we sincerely appreciate their partnership. The superintendent's listening and learning adventure continues as I spend my first 100 days as your superintendent in discovery and exploration. I have now soared with Hawks, Blackhawks, Ivy Hawks, Cardinals, Phoenix, and Eagles. I have run with war colts, war ponies, and Roadrunners. I've blasted off with jets and rockets, and I've crested the high plateaus with rams and Wildcats. In visiting all 45 of our schools and having spent a full school day in 14 schools so far, I can tell you with no reservation that I am incredibly impressed and proud of what I've experienced in the classrooms across this great school system. Our town hall-style meetings in each district are underway. Last week, we conducted a town hall meeting in the Owen District at Community High School, and this week, we were in the Reynolds District at Charles C. Bell Elementary School. I'm enjoying the opportunity to meet with parents and community members as well. This month, I also have had the opportunity to visit our Family Resource Center and speak with members of our student support team. Our team is working hard to support the mental health of our students and staff. We're working with community partners to connect families with needed resources. This work we do each day is not easy and not for the faint of heart. And yet, in the midst of this hard work, I've encountered smiles, and joy, and laughter in each of our schools. As I share each month, we recognize that we stand on the shoulders of giants. We face the challenges before us. We know that students, families, and the community have never needed a strong, loving, and caring school system as much as they do now. We accept this challenge. We commit to each and every one of our students. We will elevate to new and majestic heights. We will give our all because our students are worthy of our very best efforts. To our team and to our board members, thank you for all you do for the students, families, teachers, and staff of Buncombe County Schools. Madam Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you. Next on our item agenda is the good news, and I believe Mr. Tim Rees is going to guide us through that. Thank you, Tim.
Good evening, Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, we have three good news items. For the first, I'd like to welcome Buncombe County Schools Foundation's Director, Kristi Cheek, and First Citizens Bank Representative, Carla Troll, and 2022 Principal of the Year, Benjamin Alexander. And they will be honoring our 2023 Principal of the Year.
Good evening, Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, members of the board. How exciting it is to be here to celebrate a leader in education, Dr. Jamie Johnson. So imagine this, early on an October afternoon, while Dr. Johnson's sitting in a sixth-grade band class, she hears an exciting announcement over the intercom. "I'm making a brief interruption today for some big and exciting news," said former Superintendent Dr. Toni Baldwin. "I'm very pleased and excited to announce to you that our 2023 Buncombe County Schools Principal of the Year is your principal, Dr. Jamie Johnson." So let's give her a huge round of it. "Dr. Johnson is certainly a leader, a kind-hearted person, and a personal friend, so I'm very, very excited to give this award. We already have given the school $2,000 in her honor, sponsored by First Citizens Bank." So as Dr. Johnson is coming down, we are going to ask Mr. Alexander to talk to you a little bit about this award, and then we'll hear from Carla Troll from First Citizens Bank.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. Each fall, calls are sent out by outgoing Buncombe County Schools Principal of the Year to our principal colleagues for nominations for a new BCS POY. You've heard of TOY, Teacher of the Year, but Dr. Johnson is the POY, Principal of the Year. Being a school principal, especially in Buncombe County Schools, is an immense honor and privilege. Though the weight of the position is heavy and a constant presence in our mind, the reward of witnessing our students, teachers, and school's success is the greatest gift of the position, outweighing even the heaviest of burdens. The Principal of the Year process, from nomination to voting to helping announce and celebrate the winner, is done entirely through our school principals. It is a huge honor in and of itself to receive a nomination, and the honor of being selected as the recipient is an immense one. Out of the 45 school principals we have in our system, Dr. Johnson was selected from her peers as our principal to go forward with the State Principal of the Year process, representing herself as an incredible school leader and representing our great school system. Receiving this award requires her to create a large portfolio to include several written essay sections, a full examination of her resume and skill set, as well as an interview by a state panel. Equally, she will lead the BCS Principal of the Year selection process next year, helping to select another one of our remarkable colleagues. And a point of personal privilege for a moment, Madam Chair, if I may, during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, when decisions, rules, and regulations seemed to change the very second they were made, I knew that I could always count on calling my friend, Dr. Johnson, for calmness, for advice, and for someone else just to listen. Being a middle school principal at that time, but never having taught middle school myself, there wasn't one single question that I couldn't ask to Dr. Johnson, knowing that I wouldn't hear all of the positives, the potential negatives, but ultimately always know, always know, that her answers were focused on kids. The fact of being a principal is that no matter how hard one tries to see, to understand, or to compare to any other leadership position, be that public or private, only a school principal truly knows what it is like to be a principal and to truly know the myriad of emotions and moments that come with it. So from your peers, Dr. Johnson, and from all of our colleagues, we are so very proud to call you our friend, and we are so very proud of you. Congratulations.
Good evening. I have laryngitis, so I'm going to try to get through this as quick as I can. First Citizens Bank is proud to support the Buncombe County Schools Systems and Schools Foundation through sponsorship of the Principal of the Year Award. As a 125-year-old financial services company, we focus on building long-lasting relationships by making a difference in the lives of our clients. One way that we do this is being an active participant in building strong communities, and we know that our communities are only as strong as our children. Tonight, we're proud to recognize Dr. Jamie Johnson as this year's Principal of the Year. The last few years have been a challenge for everyone, but especially our children and our educators. Dr. Johnson is a wonderful example of an educator and administrator that has overcome these challenges to make a positive impact on her staff and students. Dr. Johnson, congratulations for being this year's Principal of the Year recipient.
I have been in Buncombe County for many years. I won't say exactly how many, but for a lot. I'm a product of Buncombe County. I am very proud to say that I was born and raised in the North Buncombe District and a proud graduate of North Buncombe Blackhawks.
Who was taught by me.
That is true. That is true. I do want to say, and I don't want to speak for Dr. Jackson, but as he has done his welcome tour and introduced himself and his values to everyone, he has asked all of our stakeholders, what do you love most about Buncombe County Schools? And I feel like I can speak for him when I say that the people are what we love most about Buncombe County Schools. And for me personally, my colleagues, Mr. Alexander and all the principals and assistant principals that I have the opportunity of working with every day, they are such a phenomenal group. To be nominated and selected by that amazing group of professionals has been the highlight and the biggest honor of my career. So thank you.
So it's picture time, and we'll ask Dr. Jackson and Madam Chair, since this is your district, and Kim Plemmons, who represents the Buncombe County Schools Foundation Board as well. And Mr. Alexander's going to present the Buncombe County Schools plaque to Dr. Johnson. The foundation would like to thank First Citizens Bank again for their sponsorship of this award, and I'm very thankful that we get to be the foundation for Buncombe County Schools. Thank you.
And now I would like to welcome our district athletics specialist, David Ball, to come honor two fantastic Owen High School sports teams.
Thank you, Tim. Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board, and special guest. It is my honor to present information about a very successful fall season for Buncombe County Schools in athletics. At the middle school level, Buncombe County Schools won eight French-Broad Conference Middle School Regular Season or Tournament Championships. At the high school level, Buncombe County Schools won two NCHSA state championships, 11 Mountain Athletic Conference or Western Highlands Conference team championships. There were nine athletes from Buncombe County Schools that were selected Conference Player of the Year in their respective sport. And finally, there were seven coaches from Buncombe County Schools that were selected Conference Coach of the Year in their respective sport. There were many highlights and accomplishments to celebrate from the fall athletic season, but I am especially proud that we had over 2,000 student athletes participating in athletics this fall. We were within about 45 athletes of being back to the pre-COVID levels. So we are coming back strong in athletics. This time, we want to recognize our two state championship teams, and I would like to ask Owen High Principal, Dr. Sam Cersey, to come forward with a presentation. Dr. Cersey?
Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, board members, it's an honor to be here with you tonight in celebration of the Owen High School state champions. Owen High School Athletics has experienced an unprecedented feat this fall, with both the men's cross-country team and the men's soccer team winning state championships. Two-team titles in one athletic season might even be a county record. I'm challenging Mr. Ball to find that out. Winning two A cross-country championship was the culmination of several years of steady progression, consistency, and hard work. Prior to the start of this season, the team won four consecutive conference championships and qualified for three of the past four state meets. In 2021, the team finished third in the state with a fairly young team, which set the stage for a great 2022. This year, they are the Western Highlands Conference Champions for the fifth consecutive year, and they followed up with winning the two A Western Regional Championship led by Elijah Jones and Jahim O'Hara, who finished in the top two spots, and solid performances by Harding Cannard, Eli Likowitz, and Leo Parmeter. Entering the state meet, we now ranked first in the state. And it was fun. We had a lot of fun. However, many of our top runners were sick with the flu for the entire week prior to the state meet. Nonetheless, the strength of our training, combined with our team depth, set us on a path to victory. Eli Jones and Jahim O'Hara finished third and eighth in the state respectively, and thus became all-state runners. Tad Sloan-Westmoreland had an outstanding performance that day, finishing fifth for the team and helping us to secure the title. But we weren't done, and maybe that's where I've lost my voice this fall cheering for these guys. The soccer team had a longer after-season. They had five games during the postseason to get to the final. During that time, we twice went into overtime before achieving victory with the region final, taking three overtimes and being decided with a Davis-Kendall penalty kick in sudden-death overtime. And if you know soccer, you're following me. After four overtime periods in the state meet, because goodness, what a game, we were deadlocked at one each, and of course, then that means penalty kicks. After four rounds of penalty kicks, we were tied at three. The other team's final player stepped up and struck the ball, but Nolan Swope drove to his left and saved us. It was now up to Harrison Kendall. He calmly placed the ball and slowly backed up, and honest to goodness, everything felt like it was in slow motion. I'm not even sure I was breathing at that moment. And then the ball was at the back of the net, and we had won our second state title in two weeks at Owen High School. It was one of the most exciting championship seasons I have ever been a part of, and I've been doing this a long time. So, thank you. The coaches, the players, and administration all agree, we could not have succeeded this season if it were not for the support of our friends and our fans. season if it were not for the support of our friends and our family and our community cheering us on during every meet and every match. This fall athletic season has been truly historic for the Warhorses. Please join me in celebrating the Owen High School cross-country men's team and the Owen High School men's soccer team, who are both your two A state champions this year. And I'm sure the board would love for you to come down and take just a few pictures. And I would like to point out, this is not all of both teams because they're true athletes. They're still playing soccer, some of them. Some are playing basketball tonight. We had to move a game tonight, and some other commitments going on, but these are the young men that could join us tonight. So thank you. Thank you for honoring them.
So where'd you get those blue shirts?
From the state.
Awesome. Did you leave him standing still?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And for our final good news item of the night, I would like to invite BCS Assistant Superintendent Joseph Huff and Buncombe County Sheriff Quentin Miller to recognize and honor Lieutenant Kelly Ball, who is, who has been our lead school resource officer, but is leaving us to take on a new role at the Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, members of the board. It is my pleasure to speak this evening in recognition of Lieutenant Kelly Ball. I'll ask you to bear with me, because anytime you're recognizing someone, you want to come up with analogy. You want to, you want to come up with something that kind of frames how a person is important to you. So stick with me on this one, maybe outfield, but I think you'll get it. If any of you are like me and are a college football fan, I certainly am, and if you know anything about college football and coaches, if they come into a program and do extremely well, the chances are they are not going to last long. Talented coaches tend to move up and move along quick to other teams in need. I would offer that same analogy regarding Lieutenant Ball. She came on board about four years ago and absolutely knocked it out of the park for us. She excelled in managing our SROs in 40, 45 schools and kept good rotation as officers were sick, on vacation, covering for other Sheriff's Department requirements, and more. Not to mention Kelly Ball basically came on board during the COVID years from start to finish. Now, folks, that was a challenge in itself, as we all know and remember. Now she's needed in a greater capacity. Kelly was always available when called and willing to tackle unique requests as needed at all hours. We have always said that not every officer can be an SRO. It takes a special person that loves students and can establish a rapport and trust within the school walls and community. There's no doubt that Officer Ball has these qualities. Hey, Kelly, we have a special presentation for you, but before I do that, I would like to give Sheriff Miller a chance to speak.
So thank you. So, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and the distinguished board, this is a challenging time for us as a sheriff's office, but I would like to take you back to 2018 when I first came into office, and we had a decision to make to who would we make the lieutenant over the SROs. And we actually came with Dr. Ball in a group, and we decided that we would do interviews, which we did. And there was, I'm going to say a close race, but it really wasn't. Everyone came out unanimously that it should be Lieutenant Kelly Ball. So I would just tell you that that wasn't hard for me, because it was an opportunity for us to go into a different direction, for us to get opportunity by Kelly being a female. And I'm just being honest with you, for law enforcement, that was another challenge, that she was stepping in what we would call normally a man's place, right? But she stepped in there and she took the bull by the horns, if you will, and she went and she took the sheriff's SRO program to a whole different level, and to the point that I felt great confidence in what she was doing, to the point that we had other needs at the sheriff's office. And so I've already been told tonight that I wasn't well-liked, and someone else said that we kind of understand that when you have someone good, it's the difference would be if she was bad and y'all was just trying to give her away. So I assure you that I've received some challenging looks tonight, and I've received some challenging conversations this evening, but I will assure you that Kelly Ball, in my point, Dr. Huff, Mr. Huff, he made an analogy about football. And so when we do recruiting, we have three, four, and five-star recruits, if any of you guys know anything about that. And I'm just here to tell you, this is a five-star recruit, right? So I thank you for allowing us to spend time with you, but we have to move to a different level because her, her expertise is needed at a different level. And so that's why we've asked her to move. But again, I think we've left you guys with some good SROs because Kelly Ball has helped train them. She's prepared them for the positions they're in now. And so I would just ask you to remember that Kelly Ball is still here. She's still a phone call away. And so thank you again for this time and also sharing Kelly Ball with us.
All right, Kelly, we consider you to be tough as steel. So, therefore, we had CTE shop guys at North Buncombe High School make this award for you to hang in your new office. Lance Robertson Drafting and Darrell Fox Welding specifically did this for you, and it simply says, "Thank you, Buncombe County Schools, Lieutenant Kelly Ball, Lead SRO, Buncombe County Sheriff's Office." Thank you.
So for you guys who know me really well, this is not my favorite thing to do, is to talk, but I do want to say thank you so much for allowing me to be part of this great family for so many years. I have a lot of you guys in here that have become my family and dear friends of mine that I hope I can continue to take through my career. I came into law enforcement with the main goal of being an SRO, and I accomplished that early on and luckily was given the opportunity by Sheriff Miller and others to advance in my career. And as much as I'm going to miss you guys and just miss being able to interact with the kids, I'm excited about this new journey. And like Sheriff Miller said, I'm still here, so you guys will still see me around, and of course, you're welcome to call me anytime. But thank you just for all the support and patience that you've given the SROs throughout the years. I am confident and I know that they will continue to do the very best job for you guys. So continue to support them, and I hope nothing but the best for Buncombe County Schools. So thank you.
Thank you for the invitation. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and members of the board. It is my pleasure, as always, to bring the curriculum feature to you this evening. And as Dr. Jackson mentioned in his comments, we'll be featuring a career and technical education program, more popularly known as CTE. In just the few short months that I have been in this position, I have been amazed at the career-focused opportunities offered to Buncombe County Schools' middle and high school students through the CTE program. In addition to offering a wide variety of courses, some of which my own child is enrolled in, CTE does an incredible job providing engaging career awareness opportunities for students actually beginning in the fifth grade. We know how important it is for our students to begin thinking about their future at an early age, much earlier than most of us even thought about, and CTE is committed to supporting this very important work. CTE has a very dedicated and super innovative administrative team leading this work, and our CTE teachers, many of whom I see sitting out in the audience tonight, contribute daily to the success of our students. This evening, you'll actually also be able to see one of those teachers recognized for her work as a CTE teacher leader. And tonight, I would like to introduce our amazing Director of Career and Technical Education, Mr. Taylor Baldwin, to tell you more.
Thank you, Jennifer. Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, member of the board, I just want to say that may or may not have been planned to have that award built from the CTE Department at North Buncombe. I want to start with, you know, our mission statement for CTE, and I'm going to sum this up. We provide the necessary programs and services to help our students succeed in the workplace and beyond. There's a bunch of pictures up there, and I'm sorry, some of those are pretty small, but that is just a little capture of what we've done throughout this year up until now. I'm going to be explaining a couple of these things, too. Some of you guys may have seen some news articles about the Be Pro, Be Proud, but I will have that later in the presentation. I have a few goals. We support college and career-ready. We also support and improve CT programs at each school. Those efforts on that second goal, we have done a lot of work since COVID to help improve our schools. One thing that I can say COVID did good for us is give us that time to improve all the schools. The third thing is securing fundings, and our funding is state and federal funding with that, and that's through the Perkins Five federal funding. The last thing is we work with our stakeholders, and our stakeholders are very important to us because we have to meet that need for what is out there. The Asheville area, especially after COVID, it's hurting. So our next piece to this is look at our enrollment, and this is something we celebrate, too. I do want to explain, in CTE world, we use duplicated enrollment numbers. We use duplicated numbers a lot of times. So if you look here at our high schools, we've had 8,185 students, and those students were offered 8,185 classes. So that duplicated enrollment number means that you may have had one student take that class multiple times, or different classes multiple times. And then at middle grades, we've had 3,288 CTE classes offered. So just keep that in mind, but 11,473 students to serve, or classes offered, is pretty impressive for a program. We have 14 out of the 16 North Carolina career clusters that we offer. I know what your next question is going to be, what are the two we don't offer? So we have government and education, and let me explain that, too. I say that CT doesn't offer. The reason is, is there's other offerings and avenues for that. AB Tech through CCP courses help us get those other two clusters. So we technically are offering all 16 clusters. These are our traditional classes that cover these 14. So that is impressive for us to be able to cover that many clusters, and it's even more impressive with the number of course offerings we have for the students as well. At middle school, we've got 13 CTE course offerings across the county. And I'm going to stop right there because we have a two-year local plan. Our two-year local plan is focused on, for the next two years, fixing our middle school courses to align with our high school course offerings. So we are dedicating these next two years to make this right for us in Buncombe County. But if you look, that 13 courses for middle schools to explore careers, that's a lot of courses for them to choose from. I'm going to talk about the pictures now. That Be Pro, Be Proud, we had a Be Pro, Be Proud truck went to all of our middle schools. Today, it visited the last one, Valley Springs Middle School. It was amazing. I hope some of you guys got out there to go see it. The things that they were doing with the simulations, all these students got to actually sit in a driver's seat and simulate driving trucks, equipment, welding, a crane, they had a big crane operation simulation. It was very impressive, and all of our middle schools got to experience this. So we're hoping that we can get them back out at the end of the year and have the high schools experience it as well. So for our high school, this is what is very impressive to me. We have 60 CTE course offerings for high school students to choose from. There are not a lot of high schools in the state that can say that. So our students are lucky that they have all these courses that they can choose through. But I've got the list there. You guys will have a copy. That's a lot to look at, but it's impressive for all those courses to be offered. Credentials is a big, big topic. Last year, we offered 1,440 CTE credentials in our system. We expect this year that will probably double that number. One of the reasons is that last year, we were still getting out of the COVID stage of it. A lot of the credentials were not being offered off-site. They were already starting to transition back. So I do expect that to be a doubled number for the end of this year. But those credentials are very important. The big thing about these is those credentials could get a foot in the door for a student. They could save a life. They could fix a car. They can also navigate a shop safely. So these credentials mean a lot for the kids, and I'm very proud for us to have this many credentials offered, especially after recovering through the COVID years. Concentrators. So we have 1,176 CTE concentrators. The next total concentrator number is a little confusing, but I'm proud of that number because that means 6,636 concentrators were completed. So out of that 1,176 students, most likely, there were multiple concentration pathways those students completed through high school. And that's something to celebrate there. That was, that's very impressive that a student doesn't just get one concentration coming through, that there's enough options in that high school that they can get multiple concentrations. So that tells me that they are exploring careers. So I'd like to bring up to the stage Mr. John Kirkman. He is the executive. stage Mr. John Kirkman. He is the Executive Director for North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education. And Ms. White, if you'll come up, too.
Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, fellow board members, honored to be here this evening to present this award to Ms. Amy White. She was recognized by the Association for Career and Technical Education, which represents 23,000 CTE professionals across the United States at the Vision Conference this past December in Las Vegas, Nevada. Amy was not able to be there, so I received the award on her behalf, but would, am pleased to join you this evening to recognize her for her outstanding achievements in CT in service to Buncombe County Schools. She is being presented the 2022 New and Related Services Division Support Staff Member of the Year for the Nation for Special Populations. So, Amy White, congratulations.
Last thing I want to remind the board, too, is February is CT Month, and that's coming up pretty quick. So, maybe we'll have a little bit of snow tonight. I don't know. It may come sooner than we think. But I just want to remind you guys that February, we will be celebrating some things throughout that month for CTE, and you guys will be hearing from us, too, during that month. So, thank you, guys, for allowing me this time to present to you.
Thank you, Taylor. You know, when the bus guy gets up, he wants us to ride a bus. And when the nutrition lady gets up, she wants us to serve meals. So, CTE is coming up in February. I'm not real sure what he's got in mind, but I hope it's safe.
We'll try. We'll see if the metals department can make some sleds.
Thank you, thank you. I started to say, that's probably not a real good idea.
Madam Chair, if I may just make a quick comment.
Certainly.
On CTE, I'm just extremely proud of the community school system and its CTE program. Superintendent Jackson sent out state attainment data to the board. It's publicly available for you to look at, but when you go through this, you know, roughly 55% is the statewide average of, for students that go on to post-secondary education. And so, that kind of tells you the importance of CTE in our school systems. And just like, you know, you have on your, when you are doing your town halls and your opening slide, it shows, you know, enrolled, enlisted, employed, every single one. And I just, I feel like we are doing a really good job in our school system right now with CTE and making sure that last option is absolutely available and attainable for every single one of our students because of the strength of our CTE program. So, thank you for that. And yeah, thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Madam Chair, if I could add one thing to that. Being a board member of Buncombe County Schools Foundation, we are very excited that we have started a smart scholars, scholarship program, which enables students that want to go in a field like they're being taught in CTE. So, we do have scholarship opportunities for students. That's new and exciting news. Thanks to Kristi for getting that program going. Dana Jones, another board member. So, that's exciting news and a great opportunity for our students as well.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to say one thing, please.
Sure.
I just wanted to point out that not only is Mrs. White a rock star, she is also a Ram.
I'm sorry. That was pointed my way because she used to be a Blackhawk.
Go Rams. But she was a warrior before that, man. Just for the record. Erwin. Graduated with my son.
Amy, if you're not embarrassed, you ought to be.
Congratulations, Amy.
Yeah. She makes us proud no matter which district she works in, you know. Uh huh. Okay, Ms. Reed, are we finished? Okey-dokey. Let's decree. Now, we have reports. And our first report is an external audit report. And Ms. Thorpe, do any board members, oh, here she is.
Who does?
I thought you were a new employee, sitting up there with her. Ms. Dennison, we are welcoming you to Buncombe County Schools.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and board members, I'm excited to be here tonight to share with you the results of our audit and the great work that I think the school district and finance department have done to be able to make this audit what it is. So, I'm going to share a few slides out of the audit, just to give you an overview. If anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out, stop me at any time, or reach out afterwards. My contact information is within the audit as well. So, we issued an opinion and report on the financial statements, and I'm pleased to announce that it is an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is the best opinion that you can get on a set of financial statements, and I would, in educational terms, equate that to an A+. So, great job on being able to obtain that. That's a collaborative effort from the finance department, as well as the other departments that are within the school system, spending money, not spending money. We look at a variety of different things from Title I to CTE to EC. We look at a variety of different things when we come out. So, congratulations on that achievement. The next section I'll talk about is the management discussion and analysis. This is an area that Ms. Thorpe assists in completing on the audit. She puts together a lot of the information that's included in here, and this is kind of a written highlight of many different parts of the audit that is primarily numbers. I'm not going to go through and read it, but again, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Exhibit one is going to be the first statement that actually, within the set of financial statements that you'll see. This statement, as well as exhibit two, are required statements within the audit. And if you're looking at it, it's page 14 within the bound copies. Exhibits one and two are primarily for governments that are able to take out debt. As you know, school systems aren't able to take out debt in quite the same way as government entities. So, we do recommend looking at, starting at exhibit three, to be able to manage from. Exhibit three, along the bottom, you will find your fund balance for your general fund is $10.9 million, unassigned being $5.9 million. The unassigned fund balance is what you can use to be able to appropriate and spend in future years. It's going to be similar to your savings account. $4.9 million was appropriated in the 2223 budget. In your capital outlay fund, you have $22.8 million, almost $22.9 million. In an exhibit four, it's going to show the revenue and expenditures for the last year. In your general fund, you increased your fund balance by almost $3.5 million, which is an excellent increase. However, with that, I talk in conjunction with the COVID ESSR money that you guys received, you spent approximately $40 million last year in COVID ESSR money that was given by the federal government. And as you guys have likely been talking in conversations, that money is expiring at the end of the 2024 year. And so, you, being able to increase in fund balance in your general fund is going to allow you to be able to continue some of those programs that you may have implemented. However, $3.5 million compared to $40 million is a big difference. Your capital outlay fund increased in fund balance by six, almost $7,000. So, very, very consistent within your capital outlay fund. Looking ahead to exhibit five, page 19 of the bound copies, this is going to start a comparison of the budget compared to actual expenditures. I'm pleased to announce that there were no expenditures in excess of the budget that the board approved. The school board was within the budgets that were approved by the board. So, excellent job on being able to maintain the budget. Looking ahead to exhibit six, seven, and eight, on pages 23 through 25, are details on the child nutrition program. As you know, last year, the students within the district received free meals regardless of their income status. In addition to that, the government also provided additional, the government provides a reimbursement for every meal served. And the reimbursement rate for the 22 fiscal year was at a higher rate than it typically is. We recommend managing the child nutrition program to see if it's making money, if it's losing money based upon the cash balances at the end of the year. So, looking at exhibit eight, page 25, towards the bottom, you'll see the child nutrition program increased cash by approximately $2.76 million. A large increase to the cash balances, keeping in mind that there was a much larger participation rate and larger reimbursement rate during that, the 22 year. So, as you look ahead in the future, it will likely not be that large of a cash increase. Starting on page 27 are the notes to the financial statements. Lots of details of accounting policies, procedures that are within the, that are within the statements, details on some of the numbers. We'll leave that for you to read independently. And I will jump ahead to page 57 of the statements. And this chart is a chart that details the pension portion of the retirement rate across the last nine fiscal years. I think this is an interesting chart to look at and be aware of. In 2014, the state mandated retirement matching rate, that's the rate that Buncombe County Schools has to match for every dollar paid to employees into the pension fund, was 8.69%. In fiscal year '22, it was 16.38%. So, that almost doubled in nine years. And if you look from 2018 to '22, it goes up almost 2% every year. So, that rate is continuing to rise. So, as you received, you know, some of, kind of in conjunction with the federal COVID money that you received, you've had, you know, we all know inflation has been everywhere, including in this retirement rate that you all are matching, that you have no control over outside of whether you hire staff or not. So, that makes one more challenge as you come out of these COVID dollars. You know, one employee and the cost of one employee pre-COVID ESSR money is going, has gone up a fair amount post-COVID ESSR money. So, if you look at, you know, a set number of employees before and after, the cost difference is changing, including the retirement difference. So, something to keep in mind as you come out of those dollars. Other things that we look at, we look at, as we're doing the audit, we look at internal controls, which is whether the finance department has controls in place as they are paying the bills. In this one, I'm looking at the small bound copy. It's the first letter within that one. We look at internal controls to see if the finance department has checks and balances in place, making sure that expenditures are properly paid and everything's properly accounted for. I'm pleased to announce that we found no instances of problems with internal controls. In the next letter, one of the, we also look at federal funds. We don't just look at the amount of federal funds spent. We look and verify if the federal funds that are spent are spent in accordance with the rules and regulations that the federal government passes down to be able to spend those rules. Especially, the COVID money came in lots of pots of money and lots of rules attached to how those funds could be spent. But all federal dollars do come with rules and how they can be spent. We're pleased to announce that there were, we found no instances of noncompliance with federal rules and regulations around federal spending. So, again, great job. The next report within that copy is going to be the same for state funds. Again, rules and regulations around the state funds spent, the bulk of your budget is with state funds. And I'm also pleased to announce that we found no issues of noncompliance within state funds. So, all around, a very clean audit report, no issues found. And so, that says a lot about your finance team, your finance department, and all of the directors and leaders within the district. You'll also see, we have a letter that is separate. This is a required communication letter, basically to let you know that we had no issues with management as we worked through the audit, that everybody was happy to provide information as we requested it and was able to provide it in a timely manner, which is always what we look for as we're auditing a school district. Those are the highlights I wanted to talk about. Do you have any questions?
Board members, do you have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Makes us real proud of our finance department.
Yes, absolutely.
Are they here? Can we recognize? Would you guys please stand? I mean, my gosh, you can add subtract multiplying to us. It gives all of us great confidence that you're in charge.
Madam Chair, if I may, on that note, continue the recognition of our amazing finance department. Ms. Tina Thorpe, come on down. We are so proud of you and our finance department. And Ms. Thorpe, would I actually like to extend some recognition to the team that she has with her tonight for two very special recognitions. One is from the Government Finance Officers' Association, and the other from the Association of School Business Officials International, both for achievement and excellence in financial reporting. Congratulations. And Ms. Thorpe, I'm going to turn it over to you to recognize your team.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson, and members of the board, I want to give out a very special thank you and recognition for this wonderful district that I work in. It's amazing. And I couldn't do it, we couldn't, we could not do this without all the district leadership that we have, the principals, the school bookkeepers, the audits that are done inside the schools. We have an internal auditor. She goes out regularly. We have a tremendous team, and they are dedicated, beyond dedicated, to make sure that we're following policies, procedures, but doing it with customer service and making sure that we are meeting the needs of our students, which is always my number one thing, even from finance. Everything we do is for our students, and then our staff, and then just making sure that we're following through with regulations, policies, guidelines. And this team is such a wonderful team, and I am so blessed to be working here and thankful for each and every one of them. I'd like for them to come down. I'd like for them to come down and have a picture. We're going to get two awards. So come on down, finance team. It's very unusual that they get recognized and I want to take this special moment and give them the opportunity for this recognition. And I call them my team because we do everything together. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Good evening. It's now time for public comment. As a reminder, speakers will be called, they signed up, all speakers will have precisely three minutes to speak. There will be an alarm over on the side, which will indicate when your three minutes are up. We ask that all speakers refrain from profane language or making threats or revealing confidential student or staff information. Please address the board as a whole and please note that while the board does listen, the board is not able to respond directly to public comment.
Madam Chair, tonight we have four public comments. The first is Wally Lee. Please state your name into the microphone and the district that you hail from. You'll have three minutes and I'll give you a hand signal at one minute and another hand signal at 30 seconds.
Madam Chair, Dr. Jackson and members of the board. My name is Wally Lee. I am a resident of Buncombe County. I do not have children in the schools at this time. I am with the American Legion Post 70 in Asheville, North Carolina. Today, I would like to tell you about youth programs that the American Legion has that are aligned with the goals of your policy 3530, citizen and character education, citizenship. The American Legion is the nation's largest wartime veterans organization with nearly 2 million members. It is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization with four pillars of commitment, one of which is children and youth. Some of the programs are oratorical contests with a purpose to foster greater knowledge of the United States Constitution. There are local, state, and national competitions with a $25,000 first prize for the national winner. A prepared oration and an assigned oration is required in each level of competition. The emphasis is on citizen duties and obligations in specific areas of the Constitution and the amendments. Two, Tar Heel Boys State and Tar Heel Girls States with a goal to improve citizenship, to become familiar with the structure and political processes of North Carolina government, to develop civic leadership and to ensure the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy that will continue for posterity. Three, Post 70 Website Student Maintenance Manager, a $1,000 scholarship yearly to a student selected to maintain and post entries to our Post 70 website. Four, American Legion Baseball and Ladies Fast Pitch Softball emphasizes development of citizenship, sportsmanship, loyalty, and teamwork, encourages players and teams to perform at least one veteran community service yearly. Legion baseball alumni have played Major League Baseball and other notables include a vice president, a cabinet secretary, and a national network journalist. Ladies softball is a relatively new program started in North Carolina and has spread to several other states. There are 70 teams in North Carolina this year so the girls can experience memories and opportunities they've always have had. Junior shooting sports, marksmanship, it is an American heritage skill that is endured from colonial times to today. The program is a marksmanship program that encompasses the basic elements of safety, education, enjoyment, and competition. Using pellet air rifles, the shooting sports have local, state, and national competitions. In 2012, a former Legion shooter won an Olympic gold medal. A thumb drive is included in this booklet along with more information. It has links to each of these programs, state and national. I urge you to keep in mind how these American Legion programs can enhance your students' experience. Thank you for your attention. And by the way, Amy White's father, Mike, is the commander of our post.
God, we can't get rid of her. Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian McEwen.
Good evening, Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, and members of the Buncombe County School Board. My name is Brian McEwen. I am an American history teacher at Irwin High School. I'm also the treasurer for Buncombe County Association of Educators. I came here today to speak about an issue that has become a crisis in North Carolina and one that is being felt acutely here in Buncombe County. Some schools remain understaffed and our county has a growing teacher shortage that is happening right now. According to WLOS, there were 197 open positions at the beginning of the school year and some remain unfilled. Of these, 57 were licensed teaching positions. Currently, there are 12 licensed staff openings in Buncombe County and over 50 classified staff openings, according to the job postings I looked at today on BCS website. However, instead of asking, how do we fix it? We continue to expect staff to do more with less. Why don't we ask how to fix this problem? Probably because we all know the answer. Working in education has become less and less desirable for a career as North Carolina has continued to defund the public school system. No teacher I know has gone into education in order to become wealthy or drive a luxury car. However, I do believe that it is reasonable for a teacher to desire to be solidly middle class. So what is middle class? What does a middle class lifestyle look like? And what kind of income does a middle class person make? Should middle class families have to make choices as to which of their children get to take part in a spring sport? Should middle class families afford a vacation every year or have enough money to repair a family automobile if it breaks down? Should middle class families have the ability to save for a home and get homeownership in their county or be able to go out to eat at a restaurant on special occasions? All of these experiences are examples of things that I have heard from staff at Buncombe County Schools in the past year that have been becoming increasingly difficult. Buncombe County and Asheville, North Carolina have the highest cost of living in North Carolina. So while the state of education is poor in general, ranked 43 in the nation behind many of our neighboring states, those teachers who are here to educate our youth in Buncombe County face even greater adversity. As Buncombe County has the highest cost of living in the state and does not have the highest supplement in the state, why would an educator in a state where they are already paid poorly decide to move to a county where they are guaranteed to struggle? If we're going to attract the best and brightest from across the state to educate our children, it will be necessary for Buncombe County to attract teachers to our community. People don't go where they can't survive. I am asking the board to immediately request a significant increase in the living supplement for employees of Buncombe County Schools in order to attract and retain the best possible staff in our state. The supplement has not been raised since 2011 and Asheville and Buncombe County are not the same place since 2011. Why do I expect our teachers and staff to live like it is? Please join us in pressuring the county commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
The third speaker is Alyssa Pedersen.
Hello all. My name is Alyssa Pedersen. I have dedicated my life to education. I hold my master's degree in art education. I've been a teacher for over 16 years, 12 of those in the Buncombe County Schools. I'm the art teacher at Lester and Woodfin Elementary Schools. I was the Irwin District Teacher of the Year 2019. I am nationally board certified. I am also the BCAE Vice President. I love teaching and I love my students. But I'm here to plead for the future of public education in North Carolina, specifically to the goal of retention and recruitment of teachers. Because when my elementary students tell me, Ms. Alyssa, I want to be a teacher, I want to be an art teacher when I grow up, I love that because I'm like, yes, they are engaged, they are excited, they want to be here. And it puts me right up with ballerinas and firefighters and professional soccer players. I'm like, yes. However, when my former students who are now in high school and college tell me, Ms. Alyssa, I'm studying to become a teacher in North Carolina, I cringe because I know that North Carolina is not nice to its teachers. And what does that mean? Most of these problems come from the state and we don't have direct control over that, even though I know that some of you have spoken to the leaders in Raleigh and pressured them to change, which is so important for the future of education in North Carolina. So thank you for that. But it's important to reiterate and remind, and because I'm a teacher, to educate everyone about what's going on in North Carolina, because in good faith, I cannot ask my students to go into education, something that I've dedicated myself to and I love. Because in our state, our pay is embarrassing. We used to be a leader in education, actually moved here from another state because North Carolina was a leader in education. Now we're ranked in the 40s of all the states. Our neighboring states of Virginia and South Carolina and Georgia pay more than we do. People could just move. But they stay here because they're dedicated to our students and their families might be here. You can't use that against us, that we love teaching and we love our kids. There's no incentive for longevity. I don't know if everyone knows, but once you hit year 15, working in North Carolina, you're plateaued. From 15 to 25, nothing. Your pay is like this, flat. 15 to 25, those are the people who are getting better and better, flat pay. The master's pay is no longer. You could see it if you look on the website, it says master's pay, but you had to have earned that by 2013. If you didn't, if you earn it after that, you don't get any pay bump. Why would anyone pay thousands of dollars, spend the time to get better besides wanting that desire in their heart?
Thank you.
The last public speaker is Joan Hoffman.
Hello. I lost my voice fourth period, so I apologize in advance. I am Joan Hoffman. I teach CTE at A.C. Reynolds High School. I am also the Secretary of the Buncombe County Association of Educators. Over the past 20 years, I, like my colleagues who have spoken before me, have witnessed the unaffordability of living and working in the mountains of Buncombe County Schools as our employees. As we approach the budget season this year, I would like you to reflect on the stories you have heard at these meetings and county commissioner meetings over the past year and what we can all do here in this room and online to raise each other up. Educator working conditions are student learning conditions. The decades-long stripping of our resources for our students can no longer continue. The number one predictor of student success is having high-quality staff. We can no longer continue to do more with less. We've done a really good job so far, but we're kind of hitting that plateau. The fact that you will be voting today to cut a million dollars' worth of teachers tonight is an indication that we need to take action to provide resources to our schools to retain not only our staff, but we need to retain our students. Our students who are leaving for private and charter schools and homeschooling, that affects our budgets and teacher positions and assistants. In 2011, my husband and I were working at the Biltmore, we both worked there, and I worked here as well. And I was working right down the hall here. And we were living in a small rental in Deverview, two rooms, a bathroom. And that was all I could afford. And after six years of saving, I cashed out my pension and my mom had a cosign for my home, you know? And I, as a six-year employee, my husband, excellent credit, sorry, I'm so sorry. I had excellent credit, you know, I had great six years of employment. I could not qualify at the State Employees Credit Union for a loan. That's just horrible because it was so expensive then. And that same house I rented in 2011, when we talked about this supplement, it was just posted last week on WAX at a 400% increase than the cost of my lease then, like 400% since 2011. I was pretty shocked. I was blessed to be able to have a cosigner on my house, right? But our employees now are priced out of homeownership here in the mountains and we're forced to pay exorbitant rental costs. They're on public assisting, we live in public housing, they still live with their parents sometimes when they're starting families and are married. I want everyone here to do their homework tonight and think, what would you, how much would I have to pay you to drive a bus to change an adult diaper?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the action agenda, it's Budget Amendment Number Two. Tina Thorpe, do board members have questions for Tina?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do.
Okay.
Ms. Thorpe, and also thank you for your management as our CFO and congratulations on that great audit report that you just received. It's, we're entrusted to spend taxpayer dollars in our school system and so it is just, it is outstanding to have an audit finding like that that allows us to start the next budget year off on just a perfectly clean foot and know that we can trust the numbers that we get to start out with and make good decisions about that. So as we just heard in public comment, in this budget amendment, you know, it addresses the state public school fund and the impact of ADM revisions on our, on our budget. And in the PRC 001 Classroom Teachers, there is a change of $994,000. And so just a simple question is, what impact will that have on our teachers? Is there, does that require any kind of reduction in salaries or pay or any kind of layoffs of any of that kind?
So at this point, it does not. We have built into our ESSER budget, we had a great steering committee, and about two years ago, well, three years ago, when we saw COVID hit and we saw our ADM start reducing, 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 we have taken about a $1,700, or 1,700 reduction in the number of students that we have compared to what we had prior to COVID. So as a team, we started looking at all of these numbers and we, we used advice from our auditors, we used advice from other wonderful DPI representatives, CFOs around, and we were, we were trying to figure out a way to make sure to use these ESSER funds not only in the best interest, but how to use them for COVID. And this is a direct impact of COVID that we lost almost 1,700 kids. So we, as a steering committee, looked at this and we put numbers together and we had placed staffing, certified staffing and staffing into this, into this ESSER budget. And so, no, not at this point. Now, I'm, we, I'm going to be straight up and honest, we have some challenges ahead of us that we are working together as a team, trying to use every opportunity through attrition to get to the proper alignment with the state allotments, what they give us for each child. And that's how everything is funded, basically. Most everything is from ADM. So we are trying, it not only hits teacher line item 001, it hits all the way down. It hits teacher assistance, it hits instructional supplies, it hits everything if you look at our budget amendment that's posted. So our goal is to work as a team effort to align our numbers, our staffing, according to the allotment formulas that are mandated by the state. And that's how we end up moving through this. And we, our goal is by the end of, when June of '24 hits, and we will have our staffing aligned accordingly through attrition so that there's no cuts, no layoffs, no loss of pay. We can't reduce salaries, that's a state mandated budget that we have to also pay salaries based on what the state says.
So the, the coverage that you have, that you are wise enough to have foresight to help cover and have a buffer in there for this exact event of this ADM and loss of 1,700 students related to COVID, and that, that coverage comes from ESSER funding. So by reallocating ESSER, or using ESSER funding to cover this... So, by reallocating, or using ESER funding to cover this reduction in classroom teachers' budget line item, is it necessary to cut any other ESER programming or anything to cover that move?
No, this was built in from the start. We started in '21, '22, building this into, our steering committee met, we brought all the projects in that we wanted to work on from steering committee, but this also was in there. We knew that we did not want to lose our top-quality, high-level, experienced, certified staff, and this was a way that we could use our funding to help get us through the COVID years. We want people to realize that we are great public schools, we've got to get our ADM back up, and if ADM goes back up, that also helps us align. So, we've got to work out the marketing plan, get the ADM aligned with the staffing.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you again for that foresight and the management of all this. I think the ability for us to maintain our current staffing, our current salaries, in light of this ADM issue speaks to, you know, the importance of your role and how good you and your team are at that. So, thank you for doing that. Also, you know, from our ability to recruit and maintain high-quality teachers here in Buncombe County, I just think this financial management of these funds are critical. So, I appreciate your explanation there, that even with that million-dollar reduction from this budget amendment, we're still going to keep our teachers whole. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I did have, I had a, well, kind of a question and a statement. What we're seeing here as far as this budget, this isn't really our whole budget, this is just how our, the funds that we're getting from the state are being allocated, correct?
This is our whole budget. This is, what happens is, we have our entire budget, our entire budget brought to you. We brought it in November, we had it balanced. That had every fund in it, local, state, federal.
But this one's just showing the state money, right?
No, Section 1.
So, where do we see the ESER funds on here?
Okay, if you flip down to the federal funds, it's under PRC 181, which is the third sheet back. This is the federal funds back here, it starts on the third sheet. These are all the federal funds back here. So, 181 was the ESER III funds, that's showing the $36 million sitting there. Does that help explain, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
So, this is a change, let me explain that real quick. So, a budget amendment is the change from the previous budget we brought to you in November, and then the second one was December, when we brought that one. So, this is the next change from the last board meeting that we had. And if there's any change in any fund under PRCs, we bring everything to the board, showing what changed.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this is not something that we would like to do locally, it's because the state is requiring us to, based on the teacher, the number of teachers we have today with the current number of students we have. Is that a correct statement, Tina?
Yes. So, if we did not have ESER funding, we would have to try to figure out a way, but we don't have enough local funds to do that. But local will be the one ending up picking it up if there were no ESER funds.
Okay.
But.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. And I want to say thank you to, you answered a lot of questions for me, and you and your staff doing an awesome job, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions?
I have one last question. So, if ADM increases year over year, then this situation is completely avoided, correct?
And there would be another budget amendment addressing the increase in the increase in money that we got.
Need for additional teacher compensation. Yeah, correct, okay. So, have a look.
So, our goal is obviously to do a lot of marketing and get our ADM up, but we don't base hope as our strategy, so, yes.
I'm with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, now that we've had this information, could I get a motion to approve this amendment?
Does that move, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is there more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. The Resolution to Support Local Control of School Calendars. It's for our learned attorney and superintendent.
Yes, sir. Board members, before you, you have a proposed resolution that would ultimately be sent to our local and state leaders regarding school control, our local control of the school calendars. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will read, if the resolution is adopted by the board, I will happily read it out loud as well.
Okay, so you want, can I get a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. So, are we going to discuss this, or do we just let Mr. Shatley read us the resolution? How about that? Okay, Mr. Shatley.
Well, I would just like to speak in favor of the motion that's on the table real quick. You know, our school calendars are immensely important, right? I mean, they dictate whether or not those high school students, that it's their one shot at high school, one shot at high school exams, if they can take those exams before the winter holiday break or not, or if they have to, you know, come back after holiday break and relearn concepts in advance of those exams in late January. It dictates so much about the potential success of our students. So, this deliberation that we've had at the last board meeting, and this one now, again, we started that deliberation with what is best for the students of Buncombe County schools, period. And unfortunately, the state law, as it currently rests, does not allow us to make that decision, what is the best thing that's to do for our students, under state law. And yeah, we do have the choice to actually disobey state law, break state law with a calendar recommendation that would potentially warrant sanctions from the General Assembly or lawsuits such as what Union County is now facing. And so, we feel like this is a really important moment for our sort of collaboration and advocacy as a community. This advocacy of ours as your representatives doesn't stop here with just this resolution. We're not just going to hand this to the General Assembly and say, we're done, consider it, please. We are going to reach out through, you know, partner associations that we're all members of and support. I know Dr. Jackson's going to reach out to superintendents across the state with this resolution and explain that this is a functional way to very clearly and formally explain to the leadership in our General Assembly why the current calendar law, with its inflexibility, limits our ability to do what is best for our students and our teachers and our families. And hopefully by doing that, we will gain some additional flexibility, you know, so that we can, you know, develop more flexible calendars in the future that better meet the needs of our students. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Superintendent Jackson and our Dean Shatley, our legal counsel for drafting this resolution as thoroughly as you did, because it really does, it really does hit the key points that we are concerned about, so thank you.
I would like to, I would just like to echo that, and also, we don't have that many people in the room tonight, but as you go home and you talk to your friends and your colleagues, I would just like to encourage you to have your, have people reach out. I think that this is a really important topic for us to continue to reach out to our elected officials, to really try to push this to the forefront, because that's the only way that it's going to change. So, thank you, thank you guys for coming up with this, and hopefully we get some traction with it. If we don't, our hands are just tied, to put it quite simply, and like Mr. Elliott said, it does not allow us to do what's best for the kids.
All right, Mr. Shatley.
You ready? Whereas the North Carolina law provides the Buncombe County Board of Education powers of supervision and control of the public schools located within Buncombe County, whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision and the administrative powers with which Buncombe County Board of Education has been vested. Whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly set a statewide mandatory start and end date for all school districts, known as the School Calendar Law. Whereas the North Carolina General Assembly amended the School Calendar Law in 2012 to further restrict the starting date for schools. Whereas the mandated school start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June 11th. Whereas the School Calendar Law resulted in schools starting no earlier than August 29th for the '22-'23 school year, and no earlier than August 28th for the '23-'24 school year. Whereas a late August start date means that schools within Buncombe County are unable to complete the first semester until mid to late January. Whereas the School Calendar Law requires high school students to take first semester exams after winter break, which negatively impacts students and faculty, and further is an inefficient use of instructional time. Whereas the School Calendar Law does not align with community college and university calendars, making it nearly impossible for high school students who graduate at the end of the first semester to enroll in college courses in January, because those courses start before or at the same time as high school students complete final exams. Whereas exams for advanced placement classes are given on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time that Buncombe County students have to learn the material and prepare before the exam. Whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that children will experience a phenomenon known as learning loss during breaks, which has a disproportionate impact on low-income children. Whereas with little flexibility built into the school calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging, increasing the likelihood of using unpopular days like spring break and Saturdays as makeup days. Whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling workdays and professional development during the school year for faculty and staff is almost impossible during the fall semester and remains challenging in the spring semester, despite the significant increase in areas which faculty and staff are required by law to receive training. Whereas fall sports and band programs have not changed to coincide with the state-mandated school calendar, causing some football and band events to occur before school even begins. Whereas neither charter schools nor private schools are required to follow the School Calendar Law. Whereas allowing schools to start earlier in August will not impact the overall length of the summer break, as the school year will also end earlier. Whereas parents overwhelmingly support a school calendar where the fall semester ends in December. Whereas local school boards are better equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. Whereas restoring local control of school calendars will allow the Buncombe County Board of Education to meet the calendar preferences of Buncombe County's families, educators, and the businesses in our community, while allowing for innovative, experimental approaches to improve student achievement. And whereas, on December 12, 2022, the North Carolina House of Representatives Select Committee on an Education System for North Carolina's Future issued its finding that the current School Calendar Law is not best suited to the needs of students and educators, and that local boards of education should be given greater calendar flexibility. The Select Committee recommended that, quote, "the General Assembly take action and change the School Calendar Law." Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buncombe County Board of Education supports an amendment to the local, excuse me, to the current School Calendar Law, providing local school boards more flexibility in the start of the school calendar, and be it further resolved that the chair and the superintendent are authorized to disseminate this resolution to members of the North Carolina Legislature. Number two, that the board encourages parents, students, and other community members to contact their North Carolina legislators to advocate for calendar flexibility. And finally, three, the board requests the Buncombe County Commissioners and other local governments within Buncombe County to adopt a resolution advocating calendar flexibility.
Thank you. Can we vote?
That's a long one.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it was. Thank you very much. So, is there discussion at this point? If not, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Shatley. The approval of the academic calendar for '23-'24 is the next item on the agenda. Ms. Reed. Are there questions from the board?
I just wanted to take a moment to just thank Ms. Reed and her team for preparing the pros and cons that I had requested regarding the last day of school on June 10, 2024. And again, a lot of these go back to the state really tying our hands, even so much as to how many days you have to do testing and how that falls into the end of the school year. So, I would hope that perhaps some of these barriers would maybe be changed with a more flexible school calendar also. But I did want to take the time to say thank you, and definitely appears that it is in our best interest to continue to have the last day of school be June 10, 2024.
This is another item that requires an awful lot of work and concentration. So, other comments or questions from?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to express my appreciation to Dr. Reed and her team. I know this is a thankless job, there are so many people involved and so many people to attempt to please, but as we've stated over and over here tonight, our main goal is to do what's best for the children. And having taught in high school and principled and that kind of thing, to have those exams before Christmas means the world to those children. And if we're able to provide that and so many other things that are mentioned here tonight with the "whereas" as eloquently presented by our lawyer, I think that would be doing such a wonderful service, and I hope the state will listen to our plea and do that. Thank you again for what you've done and your team, we appreciate you.
First, welcome.
I have one last question, or for myself, anyway. So, the School Calendar Committee put in a lot of work on this as well, so thank them as well. I know it's, again, there's so many different options, and as I've gone out into the Reynolds District and asked stakeholders, hey, what do you think about the proposed calendar? You know, you get a myriad of responses back about when should a early release day be? Should it be here or there? And I can say that, you know, I certainly trust the work of the committee. I think it's the best calendar that you can come up with within the confines of the law. One thing I do encourage those stakeholders to do, as they do express, you know, different ideas for the school calendar and how things could work a little better, maybe, I do encourage them to express interest on serving on that committee. So, just for the benefit of myself and all of the stakeholders, when does that committee start to get formed, and how do teachers and students and parents express interest to potentially serve or provide ideas and feedback on the calendar?
Sure, thank you for that question.
For next year?
It is.
The year after?
Yes, for the, I know, we planned for the next year, it's confusing. Thank you for the question, Mr. Elliott. It's very important to us that we have a variety of stakeholder input. We do typically have a rotational basis where we reach out to principals in all of our six districts and our at-large district to nominate parents and students to represent, to be represented on that committee. We also involve our Buncombe County Association of Educators, as well as our Teacher of the Year representatives on that team. For divisions such as counseling, we have representatives who are nominated by our Student Services Director, for instance. So, we typically rotate representation to ensure that we have all stakeholder voices at the table. We typically start that process in the summer months going into the next school year, because we do have some staff turnover that happens. But in addition, I would certainly welcome the opportunity to discuss if we need to take a look at those procedures, and just to ensure that we have the stakeholder representation and voice on that team to make these very important decisions.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead. And if I may add, if we have parents or stakeholders who are interested in serving on the committee as a placeholder between now and any work we do in terms of committee composition work for the future, contacting their principal, just to say I'm interested, and allowing the principal to know, because that's one of our conduits for communication. And for community members who may be interested, contacting Mrs. Reed or myself. We'll keep a running list as we get ready for that work this summer.
Thanks.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve?
Does that move?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Did we have discussion?
I believe we did.
Did that for Mr. Shatley, you know? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Ms. Reed? We'll have school next year, won't we?
We sure will.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the middle, the early-middle college academic calendar for '22-'23. And that is Ms. Reed and Dr. Lanahan. So, Dr. Lanahan. This is another one of my former students, I'll tell you.
Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair.
Dr. Jackson, Madam Chair, members of the Board, I appreciate the discussion around the complications of the larger Buncombe County Schools' calendar. And as the principal of two cooperative innovative high schools, we are in the very, very fortunate position to be able to propose to you an alternate calendar for our two schools that live on the AB Tech campus. And the reason that is really important is because our priority is to help make sure that our students are not only accessing their high school coursework, but also able to fully access the community college courses and that particular schedule. For years, Buncombe County Early College and Middle College did have a separate calendar from the rest of Buncombe County Schools. And that in and of itself has challenges. And so, for the past four or five years, we have aligned with Buncombe County Schools. But as the gap between the start of the AB Tech calendar and the Buncombe County Schools' calendar has gotten more wide, that has become really untenable for our students. For example, AB Tech started on January 9th. Our students are still finishing their AB Tech semester. And so, we have a two-and-a-half-week period that we are currently in where students are living in two worlds, rather in a difficult situation. So, what our school has done with our school improvement team is proposed a calendar that takes advantage of that cooperative innovative high school flexibility. To be clear, that flexibility is only around the start and end dates. We still have to meet the hours of instruction, which the calendar we've proposed to you does. And in striking the balance for our families who may have students at earlier middle college, but also in the rest of Buncombe County Schools, we've tried to maintain the interior of that calendar to align precisely with the early release, early dismissal days, with the teacher workdays, and so forth. So, that's the calendar that you have presented to you to consider for Buncombe County Early College and Middle College.
Do we have questions for her?
I have a question. I'm just curious, and I'm sure you've worked through all this, like, what does transportation look like on the days that things don't align?
Yep, that's an excellent question. So, there are only five days in the calendar when that transportation does not align, the first five days of the calendar, when our students would come to school earlier. So, that would be a request to the district for additional transportation. But from the base district high schools to the AB Tech campus, we do not request neighborhood transportation. That's too expansive. But there would be an additional transportation cost that week. We've had that in the past. And in the past, it was for two weeks, not for the five days that we are requesting this year.
Okay, thank you.
Can you clarify, again, the designation that early and middle college has that allows it to have this alternative calendar?
Sure. Early College, Middle College, Nesbit Discovery Academy are all cooperative innovative high schools. And so, that is the designation from the state that allows that flexibility with the calendar, among other things, but particularly the calendar flexibility.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
If I just may, and thank you very much for your question, Ms. Simpkins, I do want to point out that while, if this calendar is approved, we would need to provide transportation for those five days early in the year. The early-middle college would end five days early, which would allow us to not have to run the buses from our traditional schools to the early-middle college. So, that would wash in terms of finances. So, there's not an additional financial cost to the transportation. We just take from one end and move to the other.
I have one additional question, since it's under my umbrella, since you pointed it out, since we have three schools, and maybe this is more a question for you. I know that a lot of the courses that are being taught at Nesbit are also AB Tech courses. Why are we just doing, why aren't they being included in this umbrella?
So, those particular students attend, so will you clarify that question one more time? Why are the...
So, what Dr. Lanahan just said is that those three schools, in theory, could do this, and yet we just have two requesting it. And, you know, I know that almost all of the students at Nesbit are taking AB Tech courses. So, what's the differentiator there?
Sure. I think there are, the main thing is that our students at early college and middle college are taking their AB Tech courses aligned with the AB Tech schedule on their campus. Nesbit students primarily, not exclusively, as I understand it, and I'm hesitant to speak for my colleague, Ms. Brookshire, but oftentimes those AB Tech classes are taught here in this building by AB Tech instructors on Nesbit's schedule, on the AB Tech, on the Buncombe County Schools' calendar. So, the difference is because we are there on that campus, our students are almost exclusively taking classes taught on that traditional AB Tech campus. We do have some classes, three in particular, that we call hybrid classes, that are taught by Buncombe County Schools' employees, who also happen to be credentialed to teach AB Tech courses. And we teach those on the Buncombe County Schools' calendar because that just works better for our students. But that's only true for three of those courses. And I think that's the distinction, that AB Tech, that Nesbit Discovery Academy has more of those courses that are taught in-house by either AB Tech instructors who come here or Nesbit Discovery instructors who are, if you will, dual-certified.
Thank you.
Hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, it's time for the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are the minutes for December 6, 2022, regular meeting, open session, the personnel report, policies for second reading, policy 21-21, board member conflict of interest, policy 22-10, duties of officers, policy 40-50, children of military families, policy 41-52, unsafe school choice transfer, policy 72-62, communicable disease of employees, policy 7800 and 1610, professional and staff development. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On the information agenda, we have the finance reports and policies for first reading. We only have one, which is 3430, school improvement plans. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do have a couple of questions on the policy of 3430 school improvement plan for first reading. So, for Dr. Jackson, I believe I've heard you talk about the school strategic plan in your town halls and that the questions that you ask and the feedback you get from parents play a role in that strategic plan development. Does the school, what role does the school improvement plan play in that strategic development?
Typically, thank you very much for the question, Mr. Elliott. Typically, the Board will develop its strategic plan, and then the school improvement plans will align with the Board of Education's district strategic plan. In this case, our district's strategic plan previously expired during the pandemic, and I believe the Board and leadership wisely continued to use the plan that was in place, the strategic plan, while prioritizing the safety of our students and staff and educating children during the pandemic. So, at this point, we are working on, the town halls and the three questions are the first kind of big piece, working on hearing back from our stakeholders, those things, they love those things that should never change, and those things that should be worked on first, which would then be given to the Board of Education as information and an initial step to writing the district's strategic plan. Then the school improvements teams will receive the strategic plan as approved by the Board of Education as a guiding document for the development of their school improvement plan. The school improvement plan's purpose is to allow each school to address its individual, unique needs. We know that we are a school system and not a system of schools. However, we also know each of our schools do have unique needs, and so the school improvement plan allows them to work within, as Dr. Cassidy likes to say, the guardrails set by our Board of Education to uniquely meet the needs of the students and faculty in the school.
Thank you. And so, to that point, you know, as we strive, and I think we say this a lot, is that, you know, our goal is to help each and every child, you know, reach their full potential. And in this policy, you know, it actually defines the composition of the school improvement team, and it talks a little bit about its function. And in some, one of the points, one of the items that sticks out in this policy is that a minimum of two parents are to be elected in accordance with state law, and that the parents serving on the school improvement team shall reflect the racial and socioeconomic composition of the students enrolled in that school and shall not be members of building-level staff. The other item that speaks to me is a minimum of two students, secondary only, are to be selected from student government. So, my question there is, secondary only, does that include middle schools?
I was looking to my left a bit to see if our attorney would like to jump in when we start defining. And so, secondary typically refers to high schools. However, when we think about our Director of Secondary Education, it includes both middle schools and high schools. And so, that's one of those nebulous terms that we may want to define in policy. I don't know that it's defined in statute.
I don't think it is defined in statute.
So, typically, that tends to be high schools. However, the Board of Education certainly, as the authors and approvers of our policy, can amend that as you see.
Yeah, it just specifically states from student government. And I, you know, again, currently with my ability to go and meet with different schools and their sit teams and talk to them about some of their priorities, I've noticed that there's very few middle schools with student government in place. So, that's something that I just picked up on, it's a sort of a discrepancy. And so, what I don't want to have is policies on paper that aren't implemented in practice because I feel like that opens up a whole world of confusion for our administrators and our parents and students out there. The other item that's new in this policy, this update, is that the Superintendent shall provide guidance to principals to ensure that the principals establish and work together with school improvement teams to develop, review, and amend school improvement plans. And so, I was happy to see this because as I have spoken with various schools, administrators and families and students about their school improvement team, and I fully understand, you know, schools are uniquely local, right, to that particular community, and there needs to be flexibility for those schools and the administrators, you know, to have that right level of collaboration that fits that community. But I think at their best, school improvement teams can function as like a collaborative body, right, that develops more or less a consensus recommendation that includes the input from the principal and all stakeholders that participate in it. And so, again, with some of the variety that I've heard about and seen across the sit teams in our, at least the schools that I've spoken with, I just appreciate that there is this guidance that's in this, where you can work directly with those principals to help guide them towards that level of collaboration that it speaks to in this. Because I think that if you're going to use this school improvement plan to help drive a strategic plan, or for us to use it to drive a strategic plan that then goes back and informs those folks, things like the inclusion of those parents that reflect the racial and socioeconomic composition, that's really important for us to know that these plans, recommendations from these schools coming for us to consider, do adequately reflect the makeup of those schools. And we've talked a lot about, you know, how do we better reach out to historically marginalized populations in our community that are underrepresented, say, and maybe underrepresented in different aspects of our school community. I just think that this is going to be a huge opportunity for us to maybe help get this right in going forward and make sure that we do have that inclusion. And then lastly, two, you know, that student input, I think a lot of times, you know, they're our most important stakeholder at the end of the day. And a lot of times, you know, it's easy to, you know, have the adults in the room with vast amounts of knowledge and experience and degrees and, you know, relative power, I guess, if you're an administrator or a parent, you know. But to make sure that those student voices are heard and included and that, you know, one barrier that I've seen with some meetings that we have in our school system is the time that those meetings are held in the day. It can make it really difficult for students to attend. If a student's an athlete and that meeting is held during a time when they should be, are supposed to be at practice or at a game, it precludes them from serving in that, their role completely. Same thing with parents. I just think that we need to, yeah, again, I like this bullet point in here because with your guidance, I think that you can take these points and help with that inclusion concept and make sure that these bodies are truly functioning in a collaborative, collaborative way. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could just add one thing to that, and I echo everything that Mr. Elliott said, I just want to clarify, when it says shall not be members of the building-level staff, does that mean as a parent, if I work in that school, I can't be considered a parent?
Correct. On the sit team, you could still serve on the sit team as a staff member, but you cannot fill the parental role under the statute as a parent.
Okay. So, if we have parents that have an interest, going back to the other thing that we were talking about, then that would be something they could reach out to their principal and say, I have an interest in that? That's a great way for us to be as transparent as we can with communication and encourage parent involvement, students as well. Because I think the students do need to have a voice in this as well.
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to strongly encourage parents with an interest to reach out to our principals. As I've had the opportunity to meet with PTAs and PTOs in my day-long school visits, one of the challenges that the parents who serve our PTAs and PTOs to talk about is the number of parents who step forward to volunteer. And so, parents who might be interested in helping the school through volunteering, through being a part of the PTA, or helping lead the school in important decisions on the school improvement team, please, 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 reach out to the principal to express your interest because we need you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say that, you know, we need to also consider, like Mr. Elliott was saying, for the students, though, you know, the times that we do have these meetings for parent involvement. And I think that's also one of the reasons that, especially over the years with more and more two-income families, you're not seeing as much, you know, opportunities for parents to volunteer simply because of the nine-to-five jobs that they may hold. So, maybe some flexibility in how these sit teams function and what time they function at.
Okay, thank you. I would now like to announce that our next meeting will be February 2nd. Is that Groundhog Day?
It is.
Say it again.
It's February the 2nd, and the work session will begin for the Board at 2:00, and we'll be in the Bow Catcher Room. Our regular session will begin at 4:30. Do you have comments?
Madam Chair, if I may also make an announcement, a phone call went out during our meeting to our parents and students. We have called for a two-hour delay tomorrow morning as we continue to monitor the weather, particularly not only for the possibility of winter weather, but the possibility that we can have in some areas of the county for flooding when we have a lot of rain. We like to let the sun come up so that our bus drivers can see what they're driving into. So, we have called for a two-hour delay tomorrow morning. If we need to make that change, we'll try to announce that as early as possible. And while I see him in front of me, I also want to recognize our Transportation Director, Mr. Jeremy Stowe, and his team, who are out very, very early every single time we have any concern at all to ride our roads to make sure that we can safely transport our students. And so, again, we do have a two-hour delay for tomorrow morning.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.